We'll call this meeting the Jefferson City Council's order. We'll call it please.
Hold on my bramble. Here. Lars.
Here.
Maki.
Here.
Niles.
Here.
Trader.
Here.
Teeter.
Here.
Tully.
Here.
Byer.
Here.
Thank you. This time we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. We ask that you please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Bill Piddle, city engineer. I just want to make it aware to everyone that tomorrow, October 5th at 5:00 p.m., there will be a one-hour presentation from WDOT here in this room to give an update on the South Main Street Bridge construction. Currently that is scheduled for closure October 17th on or on that date. But the WDOT representatives as well as the contractor for Sheik Island Services will be on site to provide questions or provide answers to any questions any council members or residents have on the project. So they'll be here tomorrow at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, move on to a presentation from Vasvi Joshi from Baker Tilly. Our auditors and welcome Vasvi. Nice to see you.
Yes, good evening. Thanks for having me here. You can get them. I'm Vasvi Joshi. I'm a city manager at Baker Tilly and audit in charge for the city of Jefferson. So everybody should have a two or three handout. So just going to go over the financial statements for a couple of minutes and then we will focus on the short-term handout, which is the highlights. So on the financial statements, which is this handout, the city of Jefferson on it, financial statements and documentary information, that's the one. So to give you background of the process of how the audit works, we do it in two phases. You know, the first is we call it a preliminary field work. That's when we kind of gather all the information about processes and controls and a high level activity of what's going on at the city. And that, you know, we will talk to different people, different departments, and that helps us determine our audit procedures. And then we come back for a little longer, we call it field work, which happens around February, March timeframe. And that's when we look at a lot of numbers and a lot of supporting documentation, confirm account balances. And that's after all that, you know, we take all that information and prepare the city's financial statements. And then we provide something called independent auditor's report or an audit opinion. So that's what we have on Roman numeral pages one, two, and three. That's the independent auditor's report. And it has a lot of language, you know, that's auditing standards requires to see. But long story short is that the city has received a clean or unmonified audit opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we can provide, which means the numbers that you are seeing in this report are good numbers. We've audited them and we feel good about them. So you can rely on these numbers. What follows the audit opinion is a short, you know, summarized information called management discussion and analysis. So that is a kind of comparative information with some like graphs and charts and that kind of stuff. And it's comparison from to prior year. So if you don't have time to go through the entire audit report, if you just read through the management discussion analysis or just even went through the graphs and charts and all that, that will give you a good idea of that theory and the why and what, you know, that happened during the entire year. So even shorter than that is this other presentation handout that you have, which is the financial highlights. So it's like a four or five-page handout. And a lot of times, you know, people are interested in what happened to general funds fund balance, how does our debt look like and that kind of stuff. So that's what we have prepared here for you. So page one of that handout, the top portion shows a comparative of general funds fund balance compared to prior year or 2020 and 2021. So the black bars you are seeing is 2020 information, the green ones are 2021. The total is at the top and then all the categories below that are the categories that are defined by accounting standards. You know, they tell us what to put in each category. So the most restrictive one is the bottom category, which is the non-spendable fund balance. And as you can see, it went up just a little bit, you know, about 50,000 or something. And what it is made up of is certain items like prepayments or long-term receivables or inventories and that kind of stuff. So that is just not in a spendable form. So we have to show it as non-spendable fund balance. And then the next two categories, the city didn't have anything in there. And the next category is assigned fund balance. So that is something where the city decides, you know, we are going to set aside money for certain things. So it could be projects or emergencies or, you know, retirement benefits and, you know, stuff like that. And city usually has done a really nice job of setting money aside every year. And that's what you are seeing, I know, the 800,000 is. And then the remaining fund balance, about 2.2 million, is unassigned or free fund balance. So this is the fund balance the city can use for any other purposes, you know, the city chooses for. And then the total is about 3.1, which is just slightly down compared to last year, about 56,000. So in the middle of that first page, you can see the comparison to final budget, amended budget of the city. So you can see as per amended final budget for 2024, the city was planning to use 431,000 of fund balance, but only ended up using 56,000. So there's a positive variance of 375,000. And really, the main reason for that is behind that is savings in a lot of different departments. Almost every department had certain savings. So if you want to see or look at, you know, more details on budget actual, that is within the other, you know, the bigger set of financial statements that I went through first. So that starts on page 57. And if you want to look at the details of fund balance categories, that is on page 47 of those financial statements. And feel free to chime in or ask questions. As I go, I might talk fast or use some accounting auditing jargon or language sometimes. So please, please stop me as I go. The next one, page two, shows the fund balance trend information for five years. So this is the unassigned or the free fund balance that I was talking about. As you can see, the green line is where the city's fund, actual fund balance is. And the city policy is to have this at 15% to 20% of the total general funds annual revenue. So that's the orange line and the black kind of line at the bottom. So city definitely, you know, the actual is way above the city policy. So very healthy fund balance. And the blue dots you are seeing is where rest of the communities your size are. So it might look like, you know, some of those, you know, dots are higher than the city's policy. But that could just mean that, you know, those communities are probably not setting aside the fund balance like your city is. So your cities might be probably doing a better job of setting money aside first. And they say, okay, now this is our true available fund balance. So really, without comparing yourself to other communities, just look at your trend information, which is very healthy. And you can see it's between 36% to 38%. You know, it's not going way up or way down every year. So, you know, that's the nice trend information we want to see. Next page is the city's general obligation debt. So that's the debt for which the city can levy. And as for the Wisconsin state statutes, this, the city cannot have more than 5% in the total equalized value. The city's debt cannot exceed that 5%. So that's the black trend information you are seeing. So that is the 5% allowable statutory limit. But then the city says, we're going to go even stricter. So our, your fund val- or your debt policy is 3%. So that's the middle green line, you know, that is your policy. And the darker green line at the bottom is where the actual debt of the city is. So well within both, you know, the statutory limit and your own policy limit as well. And it is slightly going up, you know, every year, as you can see, but you're aware, you're doing a lot of projects and all that. So and some of this might be, you know, tip-related debt too. So that's, you know, tip is going to get, you know, paid for that debt too. So overall, the city had about 9.4 million of general obligation debt. And then the utility also had about 2.3 million of revenue debt, which is going to get paid through utility, you know, revenues. So that's not, you don't have to levy for it. And at the bottom of that page, we have given a link to the Wisconsin policy firm's comparative information. Because a lot of times people are wondering, okay, this is great, this is our debt. But we want to see where other communities our size are at. So we can see whether, you know, we are too high or too low and, you know, all that. So if you go to that link and select that, then you'll be able to see whichever community you want to see within Wisconsin your size. And then the last page, page four, also shows debt information. But this is the debt service payments compared to non-capital expenditures. So that service includes principal payments for geo-debt and interest payments. So again, as you can see, you know, rest of the communities are the black dots and the city is the green trend line. And it's between 12% to 13% every year, not going too high, too low. So definitely a very healthy relationship or ratio there as well. So that's, that's all I had on the financial information. And I wanted to go over this other, one other report, which is called the reporting at insights. That's how the cover is going to look like. And that report is basically our required communication to you, you know, those charged with governance, your auditing standard say we have to give you in writing, you know, all this communication, which talks about our responsibilities and the city's responsibilities. Any new accounting standards, you know, that the city has implemented, which were none. 2021 was a quiet year, but city will be implementing a new lease accounting standard for 2022. But otherwise, no new standards for 2021. It talks about our audit approach, talks about our focus of focus areas, any internal control type of matters, you know, that we have noted as part of the audit. And those are pages six and seven. And that's the same information as prior years. There is no change to that. Number eight and nine, some other comments and recommendations. So again, that's the similar information compared to last year. Then on page 13, we talk about any other non-attached type services that was provided to the city, which is generally, you know, financial preparation, any entry that we made, any consulting projects or anything that we have done, obviously. Page 14 has a link to other resources. So if you are interested in, you know, more resources, learning more, then you can go to that link and, you know, find out more about it. I think that's all. Page 25 is new upcoming changes. So that's where the lead standard comes into play. Page 28 shows all the entries that we made as part of this year's audit and which fund, you know, it affected. So those are the entries you need. And that's it. That's the end of the communication we have. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Vasvi. Any questions for Vasvi? I hear you, Dan. Let's again thank you for your good work. I appreciate your working with our city staff. And we appreciate city staff in guiding us in a financial place.
Yep, yeah, Tanya and Tim and Bill and everybody, you know, Sarah and Amanda, everybody's super helpful and super responsive, you know, whenever we ask questions or we have put a lot of documentation and support and all that. And they're very prompt and courteous and, you know, very happy towards my family. So thanks for providing the help.
Good. Thank you. Next, we move on to number four, a discussion about the stormwater and conservancy pond background. I'll turn it over to Chip.
Yeah, thank you. I'm hoping to spend maybe the next 20, 25 minutes or so to talk about the pond that the mayor had mentioned. Particularly in light of some of the comments that were made two weeks ago, quite frankly, a number of them just weren't true. And I want to make sure that we spend a little time, Chris and Bill and Brian from Town and Country primarily, to address some of these. And the specific issues that I really asked them to discuss include, one, the discussion from one of the members of the audience two weeks ago was questioning whether the city even had the right to convey water in the manner that it's being done. I'd like to talk a little bit about that. Two, I'd like the engineers to talk a little bit about the effect of the conservancy on the existing outflow extending to what we call the Callaway Pond. And you might remember, there were comments saying that what was happening in the conservancy was going to bring significant more volumes of water to that pond. That is just not true, quite from an engineering standpoint, quite honestly. The third thing that I'm hoping the engineers can address is prior to the pond being built, the effect of the existing developments, including Brickyard Court and Fairway Circle on this area. And then lastly, I'd ask Bill to give a status of the pond construction. And I think what might be a request from adjacent homeowners to convey water from their subs to the pond. So I think with that, I'm going to ask Chris maybe to address the first comment in terms of the city's ability to convey water to the pond.
Yeah, there is a recorded easement dated April 1994. And it goes from Callaway Development, LL C, to Meadow Springs. And it gives them the right to convey water from the golf course across Callaway property. Now, this, this easement, yet it was recorded, is also to the successors and interests in the science of Meadow Spring. My understanding that Meadow Springs sold to Madison Golf Course, which sold a lot of the property to the city. So the city is successor of interest to the terms of that easement. So I conclude from that, we do have a legal right to convey water.
Thank you. Bill, can you address the second point?
Sure. So two weeks ago, it was stated that the lots at the former clubhouse that are being built by Loose Homes as well as long, as well as the lots along Dewey are contributing water to this pond construction area. I can assure you that none of those 19 lots are contributing water to this area. The drainage of the nine lots, it's not referring to the clubhouse area, there's going to be nine lots up there. Those nine lots will direct water to the new storm sewer that is being currently extended and constructed for the extension of Washington Street. So those lots be draining into that storm sewer. The back of those lots are actually draining into the existing wetland that permanently exists and is located immediately to the south of those homes. That wetland actually carries water through a ditch and dumps into an existing storm sewer in Green Street. Both the storm sewer that I've just referenced convey water directly to the Rock River. Regarding the 10 lots along Dewey, those lots do not drain back through the pond, just from a topographic standpoint. Those drain in the backyard as well as Dewey. So none of that water is actually conveyed into that area. So it doesn't impact anything through there. Moving on to the next point in regard to just the effect over the years of the developments. So prior to the development of these areas, the Brickyard Court Development and Fairway Circle water was conveyed to these areas to the Callaway Pond. This is actually a topo map. I'll try to just show you guys here. This was from 1994. So this is Fairway Lane right here where I've got my cursor. This is Rock Street. So this is prior to the Fairway Circle development that would come in here and drain through this area. So everybody kind of follow that on the council where I'm looking. So you can see a high point here. And this area clearly drains through this area to what is the Callaway Pond. So that water was all conveyed prior to that. Now, had either of these developments been constructed today, they would look significantly different than what's out there from a standpoint that simply when these were constructed back in 99, didn't have regulations that are currently do. Be that as may, you know, we have properties that were constructed, there wasn't stormwater management in those areas. But that was the case. But going back to 99, when this was first constructed, there's actually documentation here. This was actually a letter from August of 99. And this was submitted from Jeanne Whiteish from the Madison Golf Development with concerns over the scenic meadows and Brickyard Court Development, over the consideration or the concern of damming water at that area. As you can see from the previous drawing, all the water was coming through there. So essentially, when that development was built, the only thing that was built was a six-inch pipe that conveyed water underneath that road. So this was a document that Jeanne Whiteish on behalf of the golf course had submitted to the planning commission for review. Obviously, none of us were here during that time. Obviously, the development got built. But it was something that was a concern at the time. In response to this letter, there was actually a letter from Callaway Development. And that was basically stated that Callaway Development will be responsible for all costs related to any proven drainage problems between Madison Golf Development. So they basically had indicated that if there is any issues, they'll take care of them in the future. So kind of moving forward, there was, now we're looking at 2008, and drainage problems had persisted. And there was a study that was conducted by Town and Country Engineering on behalf of the city at the time to address some of these known issues. So I'm going to ask Brian from Town and Country if he could speak somewhat of that report and some of the findings and recommendations, conclusions of that report.
Thanks, Bill.
Perfect.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Brian Berkwas. I have been with Town and Country Engineering for about 20 years. I actually worked on this report back in '08. And I'll likely be seeing a lot of you folks in the future in this interim period. I'm going to be helping out as a substitute engineer while you're in between engineers. But for this particular effort, Dan Ludwig at the time, city engineer, asked us to get an analysis done of that area. Bill mentioned that had some of those developments occurred post, really 2004 was when the state started creating and enforcing stormwater management. You know, what would have been done different and what could be done at that time now? What could be done in 2008, 2009 to help mitigate some of those development practices? As Bill indicated, there was a single six-inch pipe that conveyed the land from the north to Brickyard Court, underneath and through Brickyard Court to those, that pond complex to the south and then into the river. The analysis identified that that pipe was really small. And anytime you have a small pipe relative to the rain coming down, you have a backup effect, a bathtub effect, where more water's coming in than can leave. And what was happening was more water was coming in and that water was raising. And some of the homes back there then and now have some fairly low building openings, basement, partial exposure basements. And what our analysis was showing is that in the 1% flood event where the Rock River's at that 100-year storm, you're really, really close to those, you're within a foot and a half of those window sills, just elevation above sea level. In those cases, it kind of helped to have nothing back there but grass. And as, as we've done now, we've kind of executed those recommendations, which was try to keep grass in that area, try to expand and enlarge in that depression and create an outlet structure there. So in 2009 or thereabouts, the city replaced that six-inch pipe with a 24-inch pipe. So at least we didn't have that constriction. The city was not a landowner at that time of the, the report referred to as the depression in that common backyard area. So the city simply made a excavation at the end of that pipe, which was fairly small, 20 feet by 20 feet, that functioned as a sort of miniature version of what you see today. When the city became owners of the land, you were able to execute on some of the final recommendations of that report, which was make as big a hole back there as you can. And as Bill indicated, because the new homes, the new rooftops, the new driveways, decked patios, because those do not drain back here, in fact, drain directly to the Rock River, modern requirements, door requirements, your local ordinance, force you to over-treat and over-restrict runoff in other areas. So we looked at the entire platte. And because those homes were running off uncontrolled, the city was bound to create a pond that can handle the runoff coming from the other areas, those green spaces to this depression, the current pond. So certainly, where you are right now is an implementation of those recommendations from '08. Those areas always did, way before '08, always drained to their, the same amount of acres drains there now, the same amount of roof tops drains here now as they did in '08. What you simply have is a bigger airspace. The project itself remained on the order of 17,000 cubic yards of dirt. Just to kind of put that into perspective, what used to be dirt is now air out there, which makes it available for storage. So the pond that is now on your property, what property became yours, can hold that and safely discharge it out to the river. It is set up specifically and deliberately to have a maximum elevation lower, more than a foot lower than those window openings. We did survey all those to make sure we weren't compounding any issues. But as the report in 2008 highlighted, there is still a scenario where, where the 100-year level of the Rock River of the Rock River is within a foot and a half of those building openings. So pond or no pond, if the Rock River is at a sustained high level, groundwater does travel through the ground and increase some pump runtimes, increase some pump flows would be expected and are anticipated to continue until the Rock River's not at the same height. So things are improved now, but we, as an engineer, always say it's not solved until you have an open channel out to the Rock River, and that's just not feasible. So we have to deal with what we have.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
And I just wanted to note too, Brian, the 24-inch cover that's out there right now, that elevation was not modified for the output on this, correct?
No, it was set consistent and exactly as the 2008 version.
Thank you. So one other update that I wanted to provide was simply where we're at on construction. Obviously, I've provided the city council on several updates throughout this whole process. I just want to kind of let you know where things were at. The last time that I talked to you, I'd indicated that Gallup was planning to be able to get out there, be able to do some areas where water had washed into the pond. That had been completed at my last update. So that work has been completed. We have contacted Midwest Prairies after the work has been fine-grated, and they are, I'm told, going to be out on site this week. So any barriers, they will be seeding and matting to prevent further erosion and be able to get the seed to germinate. The last thing I wanted to touch base on is just in regard to, at the last meeting, I believe some of the neighbors indicated they contacted DNR. DNR, to my understanding, has been out on site twice at the request of the neighbors. Following their meeting on that Friday, Brian Berquist and I contacted Dan Becta from DNR, provided an update, telling exactly what we were doing, what we had done, what we were still planning. It wasn't a long conversation. We spoke briefly, and then Dan concluded the conversation, saying that DNR has no issues over what the city is doing out there. No additional follow-up or as bills were requested by Dan. So there's nothing else that we need to do. He's fine with what we're doing out there and aware of what's going on. I will once again reiterate to the city council that the pond has been permitted, it's properly constructed, and the remaining work is being completed per the original construction. In regard to the adjacent owners, homeowners' request to direct some discharges to the pond, there are, you can see on this drawing, there are, the front sides of these properties are included in the watershed to the pond. Therefore, I do recommend that any homeowners that have requested it along that area are allowed to dump their sump discharges into the pond. I recommend that it's done at their cost. And then if there is any easement that is needed across city property, that that be obtained so that there is legal easements. Currently and prior to the development of that pond, there were several sump discharges that were being dumped into that area, which would have been Madison Golf property at the time. There was no easements of record that we're aware of permitting any of those. So if there is any sump discharges put in there at this point, we'd recommend that they're
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
done through a proper legal easement and recorded.
Lars?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
So just to, just to be clear, Bill, that it is possible for, and I want to say it
Niles?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
was Mrs. Fisher that had issues in the basement, I think. She came to the last meeting. So if she wants to tie her sump to the pond, she could do so, and it probably gets conveyed to some area right around where the overflow device is.
That'd be correct.
Correct.
That'd be correct.
And so that is possible to do. You know, generally, staff would say if that would help alleviate the issues during a big rain event, and you know, I think the one that caused it, you know, dropped seven plus on us. And, you know, sure, there was lots of flooding in the community. It wasn't just down there, but if that will help that situation, I think we'd say, you know, we want an easement, we want to get it recorded, but you know, I think that's something that would be very, very doable. And there may be other units in the association that might benefit from that as well.
Okay. Any council members have any questions or comments?
Do you guys have a two- to three-year process before you really have, before all the vegetation comes in the way you really want it?
Cindy, what would you say? I mean, right now, what we're seeing in there is really rye to establish that. I think there has been some wildflowers that popped up.
We've got some natives that have come in, some, you'll see some of the comb flowers and some things like that. You're really looking at a two- to three-year timeframe before those native will really start to pop.
Consistent with the rest of the conservancy as well.
Yes, very consistent.
Okay. Thank you for setting Northwood Street and providing the actual.
You don't get this meeting.
Let's move on to appointments by the mayor, confirmed by the city council. The tourism committee asked that you confirm Jim Schrader's council. I'll have a motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying ayes your name is called.
Alderman Lars?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Byer? Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Ordinance number 6-22 in ordinance modifying section 265, H19 of the municipal code of the city of Jefferson that was adopted on January 18, 2022. For its second reading, hold the Lars, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson ordinance number 6-22. Whereas the city of Jefferson, the city has previously adopted several ordinances regulating the use and operation of all-terrain vehicles, ATVs, and utility-terrain vehicles, UTVs. The lease version of, was adopted in January 18, 2022. And whereas the city finds that the use of ATVs and UTVs has not been problematic for the safety and well-being of the citizens of the city, and therefore, the use of these vehicles can be expanded as set forth. Now, therefore, the common council of the city of Jefferson does hereby ordain as follows: Section 4, ATV/UTV routes. A, ATV/UTV usage should be authorized on city streets except as follows. One, no usage on Business State Highway 26 north of, on Main Street, from Pure Street to North Watertown Avenue and Junction Road. Section 6, speed limits. All ATV/UTV operators shall observe the posted speed limits on the city streets. Section 8, parent J, groups of 25 or more ATV/UTV operators shall notify the Jefferson Police Department before entering the legal boundaries of the city. Section 12, sunset provision. Ordinance 265-19, as modified herein, shall terminate six months at 11:59 p.m. after adoption unless extended by the common council of the city of Jefferson. Section 14, effective date. This ordinance shall take into effect after passage, publication, and installation as required by law. Section 15, legal effects. All provisions of the existing 265-19 that are not in conformity herein are hereby repealed. All of the provisions are reaffirmed by this order.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Mackey. Discussion. Any questions or comments since our last discussion about this? Kate Chee, did you have any other things you wanted to add?
No, I'm the mayor.
Thank you.
I'll just add one to Bill.
Sure, Bill.
As we've done previously, we've worked with the Jefferson Half Mile Club. We've had meetings, Chief Director, myself, and Half Mile Club, most public works. This is currently a mock of the signs based on the current written ordinance that Half Mile Club will be purchasing and will be installing those at all the entrance points to the city. So this is something that, as previously discussed, ordinance, those are in effect once these are posted. So I think they had indicated if everything's approved tonight, they figure in a couple weeks. So we'll notify them right away, and then as soon as these are available, Public Works will work with them, maybe they'll get them posted, and then I'll make sure that somebody puts something up on Facebook notifying everyone that they are currently open.
Good. Thank you, Bill. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of ordinance number 6-22, please signify by saying ayes your name is called and hope you're opposed.
Alderman Mackey?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution number 45, tonight's consent agenda. Hold it versus Schrader, please.
Mr. Mayor, here comes city of resolution number 45, the consent agenda. Be resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson that the consent agenda for October 4, 2022 is hereby adopted. A, vouchers payable for October 2022 in the amount of $676,991.51. Payroll summary for September 23, 2022 in the amount of $183,219.71. B, council minutes from the September 20, 2022 meeting of the common council. And C, licenses approved by the regulatory committee. Operator's licenses, there were four this evening. And class B picnic license for the Lions Club on October 8, and that's for shrimp boil and outdoor music. And outdoor music, thank you. I approve this.
Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
By Alderman Teeter?
Before we vote on it, I noticed this afternoon that there is a change I'd like to make in the minutes. As the council will recall, we voted on whether to end fluoridation. That motion was defeated 6 to 2, which is fine, but according to law, we should have the actual names of who voted for it and who voted against it. I think the, there were two people that voted for it. I think it was Mr. Tully and Mr. Mackey, and the rest voted against it, and the motion was defeated. So when we approve the minutes, that correction should be made.
Thank you. Do we need to formally make a motion? Do we need an amendment?
Yeah, if you could.
See, I amend the motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting to include the names of those who voted for and those who voted against.
Perfect.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Lars. If there's no other discussion, all in favor of the motion to amend the minutes, please signify by saying ayes your name is called and hope you're opposed.
Alderman Niles?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Now, resolution, the amended resolution number 45, please signify by saying ayes your name is called and hope you're opposed.
Alderman Schrader?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. And I would like to encourage everyone to attend the Lions Club shrimp boil and outdoor music this Saturday. Finally, resolution number 46, a resolution requesting exemption from the county library tax. Council President, Tully, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Offerman, city of Jefferson, resolution number 46. Resolution requesting exemption from county library tax. Whereas the Jefferson County Board has established a county library service and levies a county library tax as authorized under section 45.573 of the Wisconsin statutes. And whereas, section 43.642B of the Wisconsin statutes provides that a village or city is exempt from the county library tax if it levies a tax for public library service and appropriates and expands expense for a library fund as defined by section 43.521 during the year for which the county tax levy is made, a sum at least equal to the county library tax rate in the prior year multiplied by the equalized valuation of the property in the city or village for the current year. And whereas, the city of Jefferson will in 2023 appropriate and expend an amount in excess of that calculated above. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Jefferson hereby requests of the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors that the city of Jefferson will be exempted from the payment of any tax for the support of the county library service as provided in section 43.642. Yet further resolved, that copies of this resolution be forwarded by the city village clerk to the following parties, to the administrator at the Jefferson County Library Council, Dwight Foster Public Library, 209 Merchants Avenue, Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin, 53538, and the county clerk, 320 South Main Street, Room 109, Jefferson, Wisconsin, 53549. And as a fiscal note, the estimated municipal 2023 library appropriation is $456,000, $456,900. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Brandl. Discussion. Anyone need clarification or explanation? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number 46, please signify by saying ayes your name is called.
Alderman Teeter?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Thank you, Bill.
Byer?
Thank you.
Aye.
We wish you well.
Brandl?
Now, let me say a word.
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.